Yeah, yeah.
It's like what?
Oh, you're not.
These council crew sessions. Otherwise, we call you and we feed you.
Okay, and then I guess I can't track them.
Absolutely. We try and figure that out, but it's okay.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't know who had boards and commissions meetings.
Have you seen that Cooper?
Yeah.
I've had two.
Yeah? How exciting were they?
Quite. They're always exciting, Mayor! So, LDDA, yeah, that was pretty good. They are, I think, the board decided to continue on with the, what's her name? The consultant who came in and went through, went to most of the retails downtown.
Oh.
Yeah, and tried to implement some of her suggestions and things like that. So they decided to hire her, and I think it's a whole year contract. So, that's really, really good. And then also on right across the street from Village Place.
John Main.
Village on Main, right there. Isn't that Sixth Street?
Yes.
Yeah, so she's thinking, they're thinking, the board is thinking about what they're gonna put right there. So they're gonna keep that fenced off, and probably put like a, just have like pop-up. So where small businesses maybe wanna start off and show what they're gonna be selling, things like that. So maybe have some mobile pop-ups over there. Of course, they're gonna fix it up, but they wanna keep it fenced off because they don't want a lot of people to, you know, destroy it or vandalize any of the pop-ups. And it may be pop-ups every month or so. I also, well, you and I both attended the
Vision Zero.
Vision Zero as well. That was really good. They had a really good turnout, turnout, I think. And that was bef, was that before the launch or after?
That was right after.
Right after, so that was really good. But mainly, most of the issues anyway, from transportation. People came in and talked about the areas of Sunset and right before, between Pike and of course, Kim Pratt. There is a school over by, yeah, that school over there.
Yeah, it's a charter.
Right, so charter school. And people were complaining about crossing over Sunset because there's no walkway. And it's very dangerous because there's a hill. And even for me, because I walk over.
You're talking about like Sunset.
On the other, closer to Pike though. It's over, it's closer to Pike. There is a
It's Sunset Middle School?
No.
The tech center?
Charter?
It's a charter school.
The charter school.
What is on
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Left hand? Yeah. Left hand, right. And so that's a very dangerous area for people to cross the street because those cars come down quite, you know, fast. And if you have, I mean, even if they're 10, 11 years old, you wouldn't want them to walk across the street by themselves. So they are working on that intersection to see how they can, you know, put up one of the flashing lights or something so that cars can slow down coming down that hill. That was transportation.
Are they working with school district on that?
Um, I think that they have been some talks with the school district. Their particular department, Phil did tell me that. But there hasn't been much of, you know, correspondence back and forth, so. I told him to let me know if I need to come, jump in and, you know, talk to someone. So I'm waiting on Phil. I don't wanna jump the gun if he end up, you know, speaking to someone.
Phil does like to, he does like the counselors to take the political side. While he does the operations side, it's good. It's a good team effort to get, to get the message across, so. You have anything, Suzy?
Sure, I have a few. So in the museum advisory board, and I'm going, like, this was the last meeting that we had. So we, you know, this is the most recent one. There was discussion around the budgeting component where money that they get from their sales goes back to the city in the general pot, rather than going directly to the museum. So there were a lot of questions from the advisory board about the rationale behind that. Is there a possibility to take a closer look and see if the museum could just pick up that, you know, the money that they made from ticket sales or gifts, you know, the gift store and all, that it can go directly towards the museum? I know that there's a budget that the museum gets, and I spoke a little bit to that. And so, you know, what would be the, you know, the compromise, I guess, within there? So Harold is going to be coming to their next, that was the company, no, it's an email. He is gonna be attending their February meeting, I believe. I mean, again, in February, so we'll have a roundtable discussion with Harold. So we'll get more, more details around that. You know, and I've asked him before, and we've talked about that, about, you know, that what could happen is, in looking at the budget then, if they depend on those sales and then we don't give them
The difference.
The difference, the set dollar amount, it can, it might have a negative impact. So, you know, conversation's still going on with that. And then for the library, and we've had, I've had conversations with John and Jeff Freesner, as well as conversations that we've had on the board, in looking at how, how to get the library to be more accessible. You don't necessarily have vehicles to get out to the library.
Ride home, right?
What?
Ride home, right?
I know, I know. Or, you know, or just even children who can't, you know, who can't go alone, but, you know, can walk. We had talked about the idea of having these vending machines, perhaps at Centennial, near Centennial Pool. And these vending machines or lockers, so there's two different options. A vending machine that has the library, that actually has books on there. So it's set up like a vending machine. And you make your selection and you can borrow your book. The other option would be for people to be able to order or reserve their book online and have it more like an Amazon locker setup. Where you go and you can put in your code and take out, take out the book and return the book there. So instead of people actually having to go physically to the library, they can go to this little station. And we were looking at what are some areas that are, that people are less likely to go to library? Whether it's lack of childcare, lack of vehicle, or just distance-wise, not being able to walk to libraries. So a couple of places that we were looking were by Spangler, where Spangler Elementary used to be in that area. Or even Centennial Pool. The benefit of having something there at Centennial Pool would be that it's our, our facility, rather than having to partner with a church or a private industry, or a private company to house it at their, at their facility. So the cost, the cost for these, to the purchase, you know, whichever one they decide, is 30,000. It's a 28,000, a one-time cost. We had been looking at how we could make this happen. And one of the things that I was, and I will make a motion at our next regular meeting, is to use council contingency funds of 30,000 to be able to fund the initial. And then Jeff was looking at, you know, they would be able to carry the rest as far as ongoing, any kind of maintenance or, like, they would have it in their budget to cover that piece. They would not have it in their budget to cover the cost of the initial lockers or vending machine. So they would go with one or the other, but they built a custom, approximately 28,000.
So that would be a good thing to make a motion to have
Yes.
To have, oh gosh, to direct staff
Yes, yes.
To research it.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Before we take it out of contingency funds, I wanna see what it looks like. I wanna see, I understand that the library are trying to make sure that there's more accessibility. Is it more accessibility to read books or to participate in the programs that the library is offering? Because books, there are virtual books, I mean, electronic books, Denzenio, and there are ways that kids and parents can read books and get books. We have a great internet service if they need internet, I mean, if they need devices. We gotta find, I need to know, me personally, I wanna know, is it, is the problem them not being able to read books or not participate in the programming that the library is offering?
So in what, we're looking back at the feasibility study and looking back at, so accessibility, but just even getting the library out there, that people know that we have these services. So it helps kind of generate that foot in the door thing. The other piece is, we've been trying to work with the district to get the library cards through the district, and it's, it's been lagging. So this would allow opportunity for us to connect, directly connect with community to be able to have those opportunities to get issued library cards, I mean.
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of discussion.
They can, yes.
So I suggest you make a motion
Okay.
With bullet points on with
Yeah, I can do that. And then, yeah, and looking at that piece as well as, so when students are doing research,
Yeah.
They're able to access that those materials.
Yeah, yeah, I think they should be at the rec centers, actually. Me personally, I think they should be at the rec centers. Then we have the, I forgot to mention this, but we do have the Life Skills Fair is coming up on, in April. And we have, we have the partnership with St. Barrance, which is amazing, so I'm glad. So that's something that could be brought up, or something we can bring forth to the table for the Life Skills Fair for the kids to see, maybe get kids to sign up for library cards at that time.
At that time, that's what I was thinking.
You see what I'm saying?
That's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, so that was something we're looking at, ways to just get the library out to the public.
Sounded like a good discussion.
It was a very good discussion, and it's ongoing, but I'll pull out those bullet points.
Did you have another meeting?
You know, I, so Archab, we're looking, we're really focusing now on construction, deconstruction, and recycling and disposal of those materials. That's, that's kind of an ongoing piece we're looking at, what other municipalities are doing. Boulder had a whole ordinance model that they shared out. So, you know, that's, I think, in time, and that's where I'm gonna sit down and have conversation with, hold me, Nicole?
Nicole Menesh.
Menesh, yes. And, you know, kind of figure out what we wanna do from there, as well as looking at campus students.
Great.
And bringing, bringing back that idea of that regional or local, local support. And then the other one was the housing. So the, that council. So we've decided to continue the meetings. We're nowhere near getting done with what, I think when we came into this discussion, it was very open-ended and people didn't really know what is our purpose here, what is our goal and objective. And it was brought back to us that we had to define what that, what that would be. And it was based off of the meeting, the May meeting, that I was not a part of. So it was before the initial regional meeting started. Okay. But some of the top, the top three priorities, we're looking at advocacy, local, state, federal level, the support and creation of affordable housing to address homelessness, and provide supportive services to improve housing stability and decrease returns to homelessness. So a lot of it of our meeting was really sharing with what other municipalities, what are the nuances in different municipalities? And what we deal with in Longmont, what might be the situation in Superior or Lafayette. So, you know, we're delving deeper into this. We're really honing in on that supportive services piece, but also simultaneously looking at advocacy and what can happen at the state and federal level, as well as bringing up, you know, we'll need to have a big discussion on this ballot measure that had recently passed. Are we gonna tap into those one?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Derek.
You've done a lot.
Next.
I'm so glad to hear my conversation about the library because we're having more recreation over at the Lashley Station, which is across the park.
Yes, that was another
There's a lot of chemistry there. It's gonna be open on Tuesdays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for tax help. And I wondered at that, just like yesterday, I wondered, huh, I wonder if we could have book drop-off here? You know, where people, it's open for that period of time. Why can't they just come and get their books there?
Yeah.
You know, you order them and then one day delivery and then you can go. And, you know, it's a good area.
And that's where we can advertise for the program, to have those
That kind of support is just, just north of the youth center, too.
More, more people moving through these facilities.
Yes, it's just we gotta hook 'em in.
Hook 'em in, hook 'em in. The rec center is now adding a credit card charge on if you go online. So that's one of the reasons why we have a Centennial Pool, because on that side of town, you know, we've got recreation started at Lashley Station, so if you wanna pay with cash, you can go to the pool. But at least it's there available, so that you don't have to sign online. So, I know, it's hard. Just thinking, backing off of what you were saying. We won't have a Gert meeting until February. I'm kind of interested because of, there's been some changes in the market, just what happens. The LEDP, they have new board members, so it's kind of a whole, whole group, so it's a rather robust discussion. It's still on there. The mayor, the mayor and Harold were missing, happened to be in the last meeting.
The executive?
Yes.
I know, I explained that.
But we had a robust discussion about practical goals, practical quantifiable goals. So that we can assess, are we being successful? What else do we need to do, that type of thing?
It's a good discussion. And I heard that the city and LEDP finally came up on a contract that is worth full control.
Yes, and there was discussion about that, too. So maybe that, there was an addendum, as you know, to the contract. And then we had this kind of robust discussion, and we had meeting board members that are business savvy, and so it was So visit Longmont. Let's see, there was discussion about the LDDA. We're all replying to that. And one of, one of the things I particularly mentioned, about pop-ups there on Sixth Street and Main. It'd be nice to have a produce stand, I haven't mentioned it before. Just because that's a hard thing for people to carry on the bus, or if they walk, because it gets bruised. We're talking about produce. It'd be nice to have a produce stand that rotates in and out, because it can be a part of the time. But our discussion is still a lot about the tourism improvement district. It is, and there's a lot of discussion about what to call it. Except for from table requirements and the tax necessarily, you know. But then also, it gets tacked on to the end of the bill, so there are issues. If you are looking to have an economical stay in a hotel and you sign up for $180 a night, you might want to go there with a $20 bill and then, you know, just the attention that you gotta bill. You've got the lodging tax, and then there'd be an extra fee, so. So to be continued, once again, we should be more practical. Plans, for how that would utilize, how it would be evenly distributed throughout the city with all the hoteliers. We actually talked about our new ordinance for the hotels in terms of the licensing. And how actually, I think that's a strength to the proposition. We should be pushing safety for our hotels, as you all know. Now, the other one is the North 25 Coalition. The bus staying does run through our mobility hub now at Firestone. And so we can ride Longmont out to the mobility hub and catch the bus to go home, to Denver.
That's also a one-seat ride, which RTB refuses to provide, so to Denver.
A one-seat ride?
That means that you stay on the bus until you get to your destination. Whereas now, you have to take RTB to
The administration.
No. RTB
From Longmont?
To Groomfield. And then wait for a bus from Groomfield to the administration. Really? Well, it's been that way for years. I've been farting that for at least four years.
This feels more streamlined, so encourage everyone to try it.
I wanna try it.
Yeah. I think you should go down to Denver, taking some culture here and that, with the, when you have to park in, right?
Sean.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, as kind of usual, golf was canceled.
Well.
What can I say? They, they kind of run their own show there, so it's a different sort of thing. The Parks and Open Space, I just had it up here. They were kind of doing a year-end wrap-up. They've had some problems with the Ice Pavilion, as you probably heard. The condenser went bad, and then the pump went bad. You know, all the week when we were having the, the, no, the pump went bad, and then there was some problems with that. So all the week that we were planning all these events, like the parade and the, and the thing on Friday for, so that was really frustrating to them. And then they talked about the Recreation Master Plan. And that's out there, so you can take a look at it and everything. Again, Diane pointed out how the charging for fees, we're trying to figure out what that looks like. Then the Longmont, I finally, I worked on them for a while here, trying to get the Longmont Public Media to not have this, our council position, it shouldn't be this way, to be just a advisory, like a liaison. They, they kind of thought that they have their board that runs the business side of things, and then they have this advisory. But they wanted us to be a voting member, and I said, I really don't like that idea. And so I finally moved them to that, said, guys, this is a terrible idea. It puts the council liaison in a position where they can't vote on, on things. And so they're, they're cleaning up their bylaws, and which is good. They needed to do that, and, and it's the right thing to do. No matter who gets that contract at any point here, that liaison needs to be a advisory, not voting. So that, that's a good thing. I, from day one, I was pushing them to do that, because that's the best way of making things happen. So that Consortium of Cities, we had, they praised Longmont in regards to how wonderful we are around the early childhood, our dashboard and everything else like that. We were the shining example of how you should be doing things, and kept, they kept referring to us. But, but we know that because they had that at the National Cities Summit Conference in Atlanta. That, that we were, you know, a presenter at their, Christina and company. So that's, that was really positive. And the county recognizes that, and the communities around the county recognize that, that was really positive. And then the Airport Advisory Board, just kind of end of the year wrap-up, not much happening there, so.
Who was that meeting?
The Airport Advisory Board? That was the 12th of December, and we had
So that was before we made, we passed the motion to have staff look at landing fees? I'm just wondering if that came up?
I don't think we talked about landing fees there.
I think it was before, so that might be
Yeah, it was, it was, well, literally, I think we had a meeting on the 13th. This, these are always, no, wait. No, we had a meeting on the 15th, because that was our last regular meeting, the following week. I look at the calendar. And, and so that was, that's where
So you had it on the 13th?
I think it was the 12th.
12th, it was the 12th. But they didn't have it on their schedule to talk about landing fees, so.
No, because I think we may have made it on the 17th, you know? So it was after.
Yeah, so I think our meeting was 17, yeah. So, so that was, that was just as well that we had made the waters. So our side is finished. With that conversation. So anyhow, so that is, that's
I forgot to put to the water board.
You better.
They were all wet. Just talked about water, didn't you? But, you know, that Sean brings up something, and that is the vote we had on the Airport Advisory Board. Somebody say, are you guys upset with the Airport Advisory Board, because you chose not to at the very end? And I said, you know, I really, I think I voted for the same person, because I was trying to advance to the Cowan House. And I think we should consider that, because I think we really need a full Airport Advisory Board, so. And also, I would like to stay on the water board, because I'm having a lot of
And, and I, and to that, I don't mind staying on the airport, why is it's the time of the month where I'm around? I don't have to be like, I'm not missing that, I have something else to do with that. Tell me you figure out who's gonna be on to the council.
So I had the historic preservation last week, and I really like that board. There's a lot of interesting conversations and very smart board members on it. But one of the things that I have pushed back on a little bit was that they want to bring the Sugar Factory into his, local historic recognition and, I said, not yet, because we should wait until it's annexed and we might have some litigation going on, we need to stay away from that right now. But as soon as we, before there's any construction, I think, because I asked Harold when a good time would be, probably after and if it's annexed, so. They're waiting for that, because they wanted to bring that into historic preservation locally. I don't think the state historic preservation would recognize it. But, so that's basically what we did there. I, oh, the other thing is that they're looking to bring the Buddhist temple on the corner of 287 and Pike Road. That used to be, and I didn't know this, the very first Burlington Schoolhouse. Joanie knew that. But, so they're, the commission is in conversations to see if that can be done. Would it be state, would it be local, would it be, or can they get in charge? So there's a huge process that I'm learning all about, so I really like it. I'm on the MGLA, I'm liaison for that now, but that meeting is this Thursday, so I don't think to report. I testified today on the Boulder County City Mobility Vision Zero Study that has been going on for about two years, because it was the meeting for the commissioners to adopt it. And they did adopt it, there was a lot of good testimony for that. It is ongoing, though, but, and if you remember when we voted on that, I was surprised that between 2011 and 2020, there were 83 deaths on 287.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
And it's been increasing.
Isn't that why they widened that 52, intersection of 52, and that and kind of cleaned things up there? Because that was one of the reels, you know, the spots where people would just, like, out of the blue, just run.
Well, I think that was probably a precursor to this. And also that interception, that was a lot of, a lot of controversy at 287 and Pike, when they took out a lot of trees, widened it.
Yeah.
Remember that?
I remember that, that was from, 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 from Capitol.
So, yeah, but now we have, we have that study, and I'm really happy that the state passed that. That, the law that now, the bill that now says that you can't even have a cell phone in your hand at all, or you will get fined. So what else? FRPR, they have, I was in conversations with Chris Eubry, who is now the General Acting General Manager. And there was supposed to be either an IGA or an MOU between the four entities that are solving the issue of how do we work together? With RTD and FRPR and CDOT. They were supposed to have that IGA or MOU presented to the legislation by December 31st on Monday, I guess, last? And they didn't have it. So they stretched that out, and now the governor wants to do a financial analysis as to how much money is any, is every entity bringing into the process? RTD, CTIO, the money that went through the SB 184, which was the fees on car rentals, the oil and gas money. And there was one of them that I forget. But, so, how much money is, are all of these entities bringing in? So that we can base the tax that we're going, trying to go after on what we need. So, we have two studies going with that. What else? Oh, I have had calls about the housing, the Affordable Housing Tax. And this, remember a couple of years ago, we voted to have a Boulder County Affordable Housing Tax? Well, there's a lot of controversy, because now they're allocating it. And we did give quite a bit of money for Longmont for building. But, and I had a long conversation with Ashley Stolz, the Commissioner Stolz. Where we are feeling the crunch, and I'm gonna talk to LHA about that in the meeting, is supportive services. That's the problem. They are not gonna allocate supportive service dollars anywhere. Actually, Mark Cull from the Hours Center called me about that, because they do a lot of rental assistance. And he's getting more and more people that in 2025 may be evicted, because the rent is going up, and they just can't afford it. So because Ashley said that the county is going to handle all supportive services from the county, they're not gonna allocate dollars to the city.
So would they be supporting the Hours Center?
I have no idea.
Or agencies like that? Because that actually goes against what we say around the county, about prioritizing support services. And housing stability.
Yes.
Keeping people in their homes.
In their homes, which is the rental assistance.
Yes.
So, and to be honest, helping people with their rent is less expensive than building. Housing for the home. So. So that, those are ongoing conversations, because Mark Cull was very, very nervous about the way this allocation is going. But it's pretty much, really, you can have a million just administrative services. Who's gonna administrate this? I mean, I just write chances to everybody. It'd be hard. So anyway, that, I have just been putting out fires.
Okay.
Since, since I got back. A lot of stuff happening. Let's see, what else? Karen Banker is the new RTD Director for our area, and we've been working very closely together. She's finding out some things on RTD that are going to be significant talking points for us. But at the breakfast this morning, the. Solutions. What is? Oh, the Community Solutions. Yes. And Northwest Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition Legislative Breakfast. Jared Polis, the governor, spoke, and he was hitting hard on RTD and FRPR to get that northwestern, northwest corridor done. And he was looking at Deborah Johnson. He was not, he was looking at the state FRPR Board, saying, we're going to do this. Yeah. So, and again, the underlying statement from everybody requesting money is it depends on what this administration's gonna do.
Yeah. That's, that was the sense during that. I also forgot to mention 529 jump.
Oh, yeah.
They've actually rearranged their meeting schedule, so I can be a part of it.
Really?
So they're meeting now at 4:30. They appreciated my input. This is what you gotta do to get it done, so.
Get her done.
Get her done. So we're really focusing on getting, tapping into low-income, so our Title I schools. And where language might create a barrier. And increase, breaking down those barriers and increasing accessibility to 521 jump accounts. And core, our core steering committee is meeting this Friday.
Great.
So I'll have updates on that as well.
I'd be curious, in that meeting, if you could kind of find out their feeling about the Affordable Housing Tax? That is being distributed, the one I just talked about?
Uh-huh, to core?
Yeah, do they get any dollars from that? Are they going to, or?
I can ask, because all of you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I can also forward you all of the folks that are on there, because we have people from the county who serve on this. You know, folks, you know, just in our public safety, the hospital, other mental health agencies as well. So, you know, we have a pretty strong list of.
Great.
Mental health and healthcare personnel.
Okay, I think it's, what, the other thing that I put on the agenda for this was liaison and commission, liaison positions for boards and commissioners. Because remember at one point, we said, and Erin was a larger voice than that. And do we even need to be liaisons on all of these boards and commissioners? So, do you have thoughts about that, going into the new year and getting somebody new on the board? Are we able to actually go to all these meetings? Are we, personally, no, I don't wanna say what I think, yet.
Let's go to. Jimmy, for my time before, when I was on council, we would get liaisons about, a liaison would maybe go once a quarter to their meeting. I kind of like what we're doing here, this meeting here.
Yeah.
I like the fact that, that if you're going to be here, you are going to liaison to a certain. There are some we just can't go to. I mean, not every one of them, because they meet in the middle of the day and other things like that. And so, we might have to hit them more on an adjunct sort of basis. But I think there's value to it. I think that the community likes to see our faces there. I think it's our way of actually connecting with community members and folks, and making them feel like we're much more approachable and everything. So I would say, from having a situation where we didn't really have the accountability, to a time when we do, it's much better to have the accountability.
Are there any that you think have no value for us being there?
You know, there are some, like a golf board probably doesn't meet enough, to be honest with you. That they, they don't seem to.
The chief's.
Am I wrong? I think going to, if somebody says, I'm gonna be the liaison to it, and they go once a quarter, that's probably as much as they meet.
Okay.
So you probably would be fine at being a liaison to it. But then there's some others that.
Is there any value?
Yeah, there's some, there's, I have to think, there's some, even the Callahan, like in the summer, I'll just take it by myself to liaison for them, because I'm there. I'm willing to do that when I have the time off, because it's not an easy one for everybody to meet at nine o'clock on a Wednesday or Thursday morning. And you're only gonna hit two of them or three of them in the summer, anyhow. But you get enough to kind of feel like you're reaching out to the members and that sort of thing. I think it's, it gives the community to feel like there's a, that, yeah, I can reach out and talk to Sean McCoy or.
Well, the way the Callahan House has always worked, the way it was set up, was that the wife of the mayor, and I don't have that one.
Yeah. Right, right.
So I went to a public, but it just seemed silly, because they were a little nervous. I'm like, oh god, where's the mayor here?
No, and I just use that, it's just an example and everything.
So I'm not sure, and the reason I said that, I'm not sure that with their charter or whatever, that they would have a male liaison. And that's, that's, I don't know.
Well, they now, now with placing a male member.
That's true.
On there, it doesn't really, I guess, matter. And really, the big issues of what they're doing are things like how many weddings they're having. And, you know, they're drastically low on that. They're, you know, there should probably be about two weddings a month in the, or in certain summer months, or spring and fall months. And they've, I think they have a, have maybe had three. It's, it's, it's the way to get things to cover the cost of.
Right.
So they need to have more events like that.
Is there any other board or commission that you think that we don't really have any value for us to go to?
I'd have to look more at the list, but there's some that just, we don't have much say. You know, I'm saying, I mean, other than just a presence there to be in here, they don't want our, they don't seem to have much idea of our, ask much for our input. And they don't give us the opportunity to talk at, you know, at some of our, much more.
Okay.
Obvious.
Diane?
Well, wow, I think boards like transportation and water, you know, you learn a lot, because it's a technical. So I think there is a lot of value to being there, to hearing how that goes, so that, so that when they come before the council, understand that information's being presented. And then also, then there's other boards, you know, the LUP, and those that are more business-oriented, where it kind of gives them a little more. Feeling that they're, have the councils here, that they are important, that, you know, they can run ideas by you and seeing what might work with the council. How would we approach this, if we wanted to bring it before the council, that kind of thing.
So you've, you've been on LUP now for a year.
I have for a year.
And the representation that they have is the mayor, a councilperson, city manager, and now Valerie Dogg is on. Do you feel that that's overkill? Or not? I'm gonna make the meeting today, so. Thank you.
Um. I think there's one thing squeak again.
I know that one.
Okay. I see a trend there, in that there's good ones on the visit Longmont Council, which is kind of business-oriented. And, you know, it's funny, because the three heads, if you will, illustrate a different part of the city staff. Management, if you will, we talked about it, Harold and I were talking about how city council would do that. So, you know, of course, the LUP here will pass the vote, so we're just there to, we. But I think that's valuable also, because we sit on other boards, and we also, you know, when they wanna talk about transportation, we can say, well, transportation's handling.
Correct.
Get out of house and talk about business.
Exactly.
We're all over housing, let's just talk about business. And.
What other board?
What other boards do I have?
No, I, that you would think that Longmont has, that you think might not be.
Oh, I think, you know, like, P&amp;Z Planning and zoning are very important. Kind of wondering, as we're here for LHA later, if there's a long-term plan in terms of us as commissioners to, I don't know, Harold's been working on that for a while. So we can talk about that as we transition. The Transportation Coalition is very important right now. Just to know what's going on, especially with CDOT, there's so much traffic delay. How are they resolving it? And in their own way, because they're doing all this work, they have a lot of data in terms of accidents, crash records. And so that is how that information is helpful, and it's still like a real like thing. Because what they've learned, when they incorporate. You know, I felt, felt like when more of us started showing up at Vision Zero, that the amount of population and children was also increasing. I don't know if you've thought about it too, but. Also, staff has been showing up to talk about ride, talk about, you know, the other officials. And that's really good outreach, I think, for the public, because sometimes we don't communicate it, we don't engage, or we don't base on transportation issue. I don't know, I agree with Sean, I think, and considering this was a paper that said in the past, it was kind of voluntary. Maybe we don't go every, you know, maybe we can't make every meeting, and try to be a little bit about saying, I can't make this one, maybe we can, but I will make the next one. Sometimes we have to make some Sophie's choices along the way.
I know.
Who's important this, this week?
Yeah. Turquita.
Well, I think that, of course, I think all of them, I believe that all of them are very important, because we gain the knowledge of what's going on. However, I do think that once a quarter is good enough, because we can always go back and review the minutes. And if we have any questions, we can go back and ask the directors and things like that. I do think that if it's something like us on council are really working on and discussing for future council meetings, we should attend those. If transportation is involved, then that liaison needs to be there, and maybe the advisory board may have some questions, you know? Or if the advisory board is about to present something to, toward, to council, then I think the liaison should be there to answer any questions that they may have. And I think that's our responsibility, if we are not able to meet, make every meeting, to catch up and find out what's going on. Just like we expect people to review the minutes and things like that before they attend meetings. So, I believe that all the, all of the commissions, you know, advisory boards, all of them are very important for us to learn about what's going on in the community. Not just what's going on in the community, but also what's going on within the city. I do, however, think that the ones that Harold got on, I don't think, I don't think we need to be there. Because Harold comes and he communicates with us on everything anyway. So the ones that Harold is on, I, me personally, I don't think there should be a council liaison to us. Is, right, you know? So, but all the other ones, I do agree, and I do think that we should participate. I'm not saying we should participate every month if we, you know, because this, it becomes a lot, you know? We know it's a lot, and there's a lot of homework and, you know, stuff that required, that's required of us. So I think once a quarter, like Sean was talking about, I think that that will be sufficient enough. And it's our responsibility to make sure that if it's something they're about to talk about, or they're going over, that they may need some guidance. It's our responsibility to be there to answer any questions they may have, like, oh, what is council thinking? Or, I mean, there's many times where transportation, where they were about to bring something to council, I'm like, mm, 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 think about that twice. You know what I'm saying? And so make sure you get your, that's mine up in the row before you bring it to council, because I'm telling you now, you don't have enough. You know? And that's, that's important, you know, for the, those advisory boards. So, especially housing and human services, oh my goodness. Yes. Yeah.
And I think, I think like Planning and zoning, that should be counted as like being a two liaisons.
Salads.
Because that one itself is particularly long and, and very tedious and intense. So, if somebody gets that one, they need to have a reduced schedule for it, because if you're gonna go to those meetings, you're gonna have a lot of.
Well, if they're recorded, they can watch them, they don't have to go to everyone, but at least if they can watch them. But anything that's about to be brought forth to council with from Planning and zoning, I believe the liaison needs to be there that night before they make a decision on anything they're gonna bring forth to council.
So, and I agree.
Are there any others? Are you on any of those?
Yeah.
Oh, NADA? I don't, I don't, I.
I'm going to talk about those. I'll tell you when it's.
I don't even know. So, um, I, so youth council, they meet twice a month. That I cannot do twice a month. I come once a month or, um, you know, maybe a point person. So I did go in the December one, they met once in December, it was at the bowling alley. I'm like, I'd love to, but I have to have stuff. So it was more like a celebration, and, you know, I could have been there and, um, but, you know, it was, it's, it's also kind of what like the kids like to do their, they just keep looking over their shoulder and be, so I, I didn't want to squash their fun.
Do you think that could be quarterly meeting or not?
I think, I can talk to Jenny, but even if we have somebody who's just the point person, so liaison is assigned, but if it's not necessary, because they're, they're more like a working group.
Exactly.
So they're not, it's not really like I'm reporting out on what council is doing unless, you know, something, we're doing something that might be beneficial for them. Um, and, yeah, it's, it, they, they have their projects, and so they're really just working through the meeting. So I'm kind of, I'm sitting there answering my emails or, or doing other stuff. So, you know, that's one that's kind of, it's nice to be able to have, be that, um, that point person.
Yeah.
And, and show up to, to be able to share out what, what we do. But, yeah, that's definitely, two times a month is not, that's too much. Um, yeah. And then, and, you know, one's like the library board. I mean, for the longest time, we didn't know the needs of the library board.
Exactly.
So, um, it was, it's being able to be that person to know what, what are the ins and outs, what's happening there, what are, what are the issues that we can come back and share with the rest of council, so we can, so we can do something about it.
Do you feel like the genie's a little bit out of the bottle, uh, you know, the toothpaste's out of the tube or whatever? In the sense with some of these, like, uh, the library board, if you didn't show up, but once a quarter, they're, they start to lose their minds about the fact that.
They, they become dependent that I'm there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm actually in their agenda. So I'm in their agenda and arts and public places that they want a monthly report out.
Yeah.
And NGLA, oh my gosh, yeah, they're like chop chop. I have to go out.
I mean, she keeps pointing about.
Yeah.
Quarterly. There are some that be like operate just fine quarterly, but, uh, I mean, like sister cities would operate just fine quarterly, uh, because they do a lot of their own thing and a lot of it is like, hey, we're still getting this going, still getting that going. But there's, uh, that, but some are like.
I don't think the library board would like it and, and GLA.
But I also think that it's important as a liaison is to teach them how to speak up and empower them to use their voices. Like if you need something, you need to let us know.
Yeah.
As well, you know what I'm saying?
That's what I'd be working on with the library, yeah.
Right. They can't be depending on, because you won't be here forever.
So that, you know, so that's where I, I show them, you know, this is how you write a resolution, this is how you, you know, go to public comment and start, and so they have that visibility. So part of being that liaison is doing that little training bit too.
We don't do things like master board of appeals, anybody a liaison to that.
Well, nobody's. No, no, thank you. Well, we can't.
Yeah.
Because if they came to us then, for a vote, we, we could do it.
Yeah, we, we are constantly blocking out of it.
Exactly. So, are you?
Yeah, no, we're. I mean, you know, I, I was looking at some of the other boards, the fire pension board.
Well, we're, we're on there.
You're on that.
You're on that. Okay, so you'll talk about.
That's, I'd be curious.
No, it's in the document that they have to have there.
Yeah. And it's interesting.
It's in their code. Okay, got it.
Make sure that those retirees get their money.
Got it.
That's right.
And GURF is the same way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those were the ones that, I'm not on it, but I was just going to ask about it.
So most of the boards, and this was NADA, but, uh, these are off-site, out of city, mainly consolidated, uh, counties and municipalities that mean. So NADA is the Northern Arizona Transportation Association or Authority, I never got that right. Uh, and I used to go to it all the time, but, um, then when I became mayor, I couldn't because they met the same kind of PRPA does.
Seven thirty in the morning in Westminster.
Too dang late. Um, too dang early.
Yeah. I know, because I started going and I don't think we.
It's hard and it's very important, but once you stop going, you have no idea what they're talking about.
Okay.
And that, so it's very early, um, I used to like them. Uh, it's the same thing with Dr. Cog, it's Wednesday nights from six to nine. Um, and that's where I got very frustrated with RTD, because I could get down there, but I couldn't get back.
Oh.
Yeah, no, it's just coming back, even the older, so that frustrated me. But I go, and the reason that's important is that we get a lot of money from RTD through transportation, and Phil Greenwald is a genius at getting ransom dollars from Dr. Cog. They get federal dollars, which then they, and, um, he needs somebody political there at the meetings. Because there were so many times he either texted me during the meeting or I did him and said, guess what that vote was? Or are you going to vote on this?
Without the contact meeting?
Yeah. Because he does a lot of stuff in transportation that we don't normally know about. But all of the big issues like the transit hub, the, uh, Kaufman Street, um, the intersection of Hope or in 119, um, we get money from them. So somebody's got to be on those meetings. Uh, what was the other one? Oh, I don't go to the Metro Mayor's caucus, I went to one. They meet seven thirty Wednesday morning after council meetings. And I said, there's no way. And then they don't rotate the meetings either.
Oh, that's ridiculous, yeah.
I'm not going to that. So, um, you know, they keep including me and I keep saying, really? Not for me. Um, so what's the other one? But we really do need to stay with Dr. Cog and, uh, the North, the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition of Bolden County. That is the commissioners and all the, all the mayors or elected officials and staffs, um, because Phil goes to that as well. Um, they get a lot of money and they go, which I actually do this year, because I, um, to Washington every year in March and, uh, lobby for our dollars. And it really helps, that's how we got 119, twenty-five million dollar grant. Um, so, uh, those are about the only ones I've been on since mayor, because there's no time except for LDP and PRPA. PRPA is a job of itself. It's huge. And so is, uh, FRPR. They're, they're very time consuming to the point where I can't even speak anymore. It's like. So, um, they're very important and we need to make sure that somebody goes to those. Uh, I don't know if, um, if you have to drive or to get down there because the buses don't run or whatever, then we have to make sure that you have dollars to do that, because you know, we don't get a lot of money.
Would there be value, would there be any value in having somebody do three months liaison to, uh, one of those? And that way we all kind of get a little bit of a feel about that, since it's so intense that it might.
That's not the way, uh, Dr. Cog's, um, I don't know if they're.
Charter.
Charter or if it's their level one. Yeah, it's, it's one person and a, and a backup. I think Erin was my backup this year, so.
I'm just trying to think of.
Was he, or you?
Yes.
Or I will. Erin was, so he never could go because he weren't, well, he was working down there, so that would have been there. But anyway, that's basically all I've got. I've done NGLA before and I, I really like it. I think that any, any boards that reach out to the most people are the ones that we should go to, like NGLA, Senior Center, um, Transportation and Airport. I think those four are really important, plus the off, out of city ones that give us money, that we have to know, we have to know what the commissioners are doing all the time. Whether it's transportation, housing, because we get money from them. So we need to know if they're even going to give money to us.
Mayor, we have two minutes before seven.
Okay.
Did you want to quickly chat a couple things about redacted?
No.
Not, okay.
Okay.
I was trying to see who had applied.
You can't see it yet. We've been pushed out.
So we're not going to talk about it.
We have, we have fifteen applicants that have gone through their qualified five, have yet to come in, and it doesn't close until tomorrow any day.
Oh, okay.
So we're still in the application phase.
All right.
Maybe they'll do all questions.
Yeah.
But email me directly if you have an addition or addition or preferences or a word, whatever that is.
And I, I have to say, I, do you like these pre-sessions? Because it's voluntary and we don't have to do it. It was made up.
There, there's value to this. I really do want to say there is real value to this.
I like these pre-sessions where we're able to talk about.
Do you need food?
Do we need food?
Please, sometimes I come straight for more, because I'm also in favor of saying, yes, food.
Yes, food.
Listen, I want to deal with Andy.
I do think that these are very important and they're, um, very beneficial because we don't, it gives us a sense of what, what you all are learning and what I'm learning. So we all kind of get a little bit of taste of what's going on, because we can't be everywhere, right?
No, and we can't talk because of the sunshine.
Yeah, yeah.
I like this interaction where you're.
Informal, yeah.
Can I just clarify one thing? So for food.
Oh.
Jen, just so we can be consistent and you know what to expect.
Yes.
Anytime you're coming in five thirty, we'll hold up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Providing you.
Okay, please.
That's, that's easy for staff.
And I hate to, hate to be a, this way, but I did notice that a couple of the snakes, I hate them, uh, are.
They need to be replenished or?
Yes. Okay, they're, they're at a, at a, they're expired.
We, we just went through those not long ago, but.
What you're saying, it's a new year?
I don't use it very often.
Well, when you need them, you need them.
Yeah.